Let the Legion's flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, united, in visible liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'm calling a special meeting, board meeting of District 207. To order, Ginny, would you please take your role? Collins?
Here.
Coyle?
Here.
Eicher?
Here.
Lee? Patrice?
Here.
Yusuf Abramson?
Here.
Owen?
Here.
We're going to start tonight with some comments from the superintendent.
All right, tonight, we're making some minor changes to a residency policy to add clarification to it, and I'll speak a little bit more specifically about that when we get to the policy update. We want to make sure that we communicate in every possible way that students need to be legal residents of the district while enrolled in the district. But I also want to take the opportunity to speak directly to the issue of residency itself more broadly. I know there's been a lot of news lately about residency in District 207. First of all, coaches, including Coach Dave and Sarah, are not responsible for residency, and I want to make sure that is clear. That said, this year's residency events have helped us learn more important, some important lessons that we already are using to improve our processes. We have multiple active cases right now, and we will continue to follow through on any student residency case that has merit. Something I want to make clear, in every single case of student enrollment, parents have to provide initial residency. They have to prove it through proper documents, which includes leases, utility bills, driver registrations, and other similar documents, including leases. The problems occur most often when someone is establishing a second residence for the sole purpose of enrolling in school. As I have looked carefully at the cases we've had this year and learned from our residency investigator this year, I believe the issue of student residency is widespread, well beyond District 207. In fact, I've spoken with a lot of colleagues around, and it is well beyond District 207. The way the law is currently structured, it's a pretty low bar for someone to meet, to gain initial enrollment into our schools. Once a student is enrolled, and we acquire evidence that they are not meeting the legal requirements for residency, the burden is on the school district to prove a case against the student. This takes weeks, in most cases, to do, and then the legal due process, which we have to afford to students, can take weeks, if not months, and that is for every single case. In each case, we charge and pursue through every legal means, back tuition, through the date when, if a student is legally found to be a non-resident, the student is disenrolled. I've begun talking to colleagues in the area, and I plan to reach out more broadly, including to our local legislators, to consider what can be done to support school districts better in this work. It is unlikely that the initial enrollment laws can be changed, which is understandable. But the penalties for parents falsifying residency can be increased, and that may be the first place to start as we consider ways to improve residency in District 207 and beyond. And then again, when we get to the policy, which is coming up here in just a minute, I'll speak more specifically to this policy. It's actually more of a, it's a pretty nominal change. It doesn't change our ability to enforce the law as it's written, but it's more of a direct communication to anyone reading that policy on our website who may be misinterpreted, and I'll speak to that here in just a minute.
Okay, thank you, Ken, and I just want to add that I am, you know, and all of us are advocates for the truth, and when we hear that things are out there being said, we like to clarify it, and that's the reason why it's important that Ken share that, and he is open to talking to, he has handled emails, and he will talk to others about that. So, thank you, Ken, for making that statement. Anything else? Okay. Okay, are there any public comments to make? Okay, we're going to move along to informational items. Mary and Sean, driver education update.
So, at your place is kind of a memo, we're just giving you an update, which is why this is an information item. Friday, request for proposals were received, and Viking Driving School provided a proposal. We have to go through and vet that. We've looked at it, which one's going to meet with them to talk about, can they provide it? What is their curriculum? Do they have the certified drivers? So, we wanted to also give you a heads up that if we were to bring it back in-house, if that analysis shows that they couldn't do the behind-the-wheel portion, that would mean we have to do the upgrades to the simulators and the purchasing of the vehicles, which was why we chose to outsource in the first place. As well as, we're going to look at, double-check to make sure if there are any staffing implications.
Yeah, this is a reminder, the reason that we're looking at this is our contract with Top Driver ran out. They had difficulty staffing this year, and are losing someone, and so opted to not renew the contract. So, that's why we went out with another request for proposal, and right now, we have one, which is for Viking.
So, you really need to follow up, and as you said, make sure that they're going to be, we don't run into the same kind of issue that we?
Correct. There are some changes that were made at the state level regarding certification for non-school entities to provide driver's education to four schools. That have made this a little bit more difficult. Top Driver are also dealing with the employee crisis that we're all, we're all experiencing. So, that'll be a lot of the conversation that we have with Viking, and also to make sure that they understand scheduling and the nuances of a high school circumstance they do not have experienced in high schools where Top Driver has. So, we'll do that this week.
Okay, so you think, I'm sorry, if you said this, I'm sorry, April are going to talk to us, or?
Yeah, we hope that we'll know one way or another for the April board meeting. If it's approval of Viking, it will be a board action. If it's bringing it back in, there's no real action because there's no contract to approve.
But either way, you don't want us to know.
Yes.
So, I just have a couple of questions. So, I know why we outsourced every call app because of the software and that upgrade, but I'm just a bit confused. If we do go with Viking or an external, will we still have to bring the behind-the-wheel back in?
Nope.
And we still have to, so we want to?
No vehicles, no simulator upgrade. All those capital costs go away because the students are learning all behind-the-wheel in vehicles provided by the company that does the behind-the-wheel instruction.
And while it's more expensive than we're currently paying, it's still cheaper than implementing the upgrades and some of the changes that we would need to do to bring it back in.
Got it. Why, do you know why there was only one, only Viking was the only one?
Just because changes in the law, it's not in.
I don't. Since the state passed the law that you could outsource it, there had been efforts to, I would say, make it a little bit more difficult for private organizations to enter the public space for this. Top Driver also has another school district close by, a larger one, and I think in speaking with them, it's just they're going to focus on that one because they know they can staff it, and as much as they appreciate the opportunity to serve District 207, they just can't physically staff. And again, I think it's, we're all feeling the fact that it's a tight job market, and these jobs are not, you know, these are entry-level jobs, they're not career necessarily, you know, career-long jobs for folks, and so I think that's all played a factor.
So, is Viking a corporation, or is, I mean, is it a multi-unit corporation? Is it, is it just the one that's on Bussie here in Park Ridge?
They are local and based in Park Ridge.
Okay, so it's like, they only have that one?
I don't know if they have other branch offices or not, but they are, they're local. They are our local driving school.
So, so the experience is, I know quite a few kids who have gone through Viking, and quite a few kids. And, and I think one of the things that I, I thought, I recall, that when we outsourced it, we were going to be able to have some drivers that were familiar with high school kids, and, you know, like, remember that one?
When we outsourced Top Driver, Top Driver was already servicing District 211.
Oh, okay.
So, they have experience in the high school space.
But Viking doesn't have it?
Viking has, Viking has experience teaching teenagers how to drive.
Yeah, right.
They don't have experience in working within a school district to provide that. So, there are some scheduling nuances and things like that that are learnable, but that they aren't bringing with them to the table necessarily, although I don't want to get too far down the road, only because I haven't had a chance to really sit and pick their brain and go through like this, make a decision. Will they, will they be able to service us?
And are their equipment, like the simulators and stuff, are, they're up?
I mean, they don't use them.
Oh, they don't use them at all?
No.
No, no simulator?
All hours are achieved through driving in actual driver's education cars.
So, they don't use, okay, I was thinking, they did a little bit of it, but they don't?
Top Driver doesn't use them.
Okay.
Viking doesn't use them.
But we used them when we were, when we were doing it, we used them. And was that because we thought there was value in the simulators, or because we didn't have enough?
So, not to confuse matters more, but I will. Next month, we will also be having a hearing on the use of simulators for the sole purpose of, if we have to bring it back in-house, we have to have the waiver for hours to use simulators to be able to meet the behind-the-wheel hours requirement. So, we get, we're able to do a trade-off through a waiver with the state so that we don't have to provide, it would be unduly burdensome for us to actually have the kids achieve all of their behind-the-wheel hours through just driving with our staff.
Okay, that's what I thought, okay.
So, that's why we have that piece.
Okay. I mean, it seems like the simulator part, because you were saying how, how, I mean, you know, videos are so live now, it almost would be like driving, so, anyway. Thank you.
Can you also say, one of the advantage of outsourcing is such is that students will have a better flexibility of their time scheduling, taking these courses, and, you know, getting their permits and licenses compared to our original regulatory class hours?
Not, not in the way that we do it. So, literally, there is no change for the student. The only, the only discernible difference that the student would have between what we use to provide and what an outside provider is who's, who's taking them out on the road. The, the scheduling of it falls within the school day, and, because once you get beyond the school day, then you start to beg the question, well, they can just take this on their own. In fact, 60% of our kids do take it on their own. They don't get it through school.
Is there any cost benefit to the student who decides to take it through, whether it be Viking or in the past, Top Driver, actually taking it through District 207 as opposed to just going?
Yes. If you can, if you take it through school, it is, it is cheaper than if you were to just take it on your own outside of school.
Because my son just finished with Viking, and I can tell you, if you're doing it alone, it's pretty expensive.
Is it? Well, what are we talking about, cost-wise? What the average was?
I don't remember the exact cost, but I just remember my eyebrows.
I remember it was $500 in 19.
Generally, five to 600 if you take it on the outside, depending upon the package you take. What we do is charge 350, but the state then also gives us a reimbursement of $151. So, that's kind of what we do, is discount it down from the state reimbursement.
You're paying for the convenience to take it outside of school.
Viking was 200, it was $450 in 2008. So, probably $600.
Well, be interested to hear how that turns out next month. Okay, moving on to potential new staff, item 3B. Mary?
Hello, who wants to take this? So.
We'll tag, we'll tag team.
We'll tag team. So, we'll start, we'll go down in the person that it applies to, we'll take it. So, first up, Director of?
I'll take the first one that's crossed out. So, after having a conversation, I did leave the strike version here, because this was something we had discussed. It was in earlier documents when we discussed it with the board. We have decided to not move that to a 12-month position. So, that's why, I just wanted to leave it in there that it was discussed, but decided against.
Wait, which one?
The one that's twelve months.
Oh, yeah, okay. That would make sense.
Number two, Director of Multilingual Learning. We've talked about this position. Those interviews wrapped today, and so we'll be hopefully making a decision on that in the very, very near future.
Just a question, sorry, dollar amount shown there, is that sort of all-in?
It's all-in with benefits.
So, how are, how are you all determining what the salary should be? Or is it a band kind of based on experience?
Karen, George, do you want to?
It's pretty much a band based on experience for the ELL. I mean, we don't have a significant number of 12-month certified directors, so I think you start with what is an equivalent position out in the marketplace look like? But then, you're, and you have a band, because you, you know, is this going to be this person's first entry into being an administrator? Or is this person got multiple years of experience? So, it's within a band. So, is this the exact number? No, and quite frankly, even on benefits, we did a hybrid of the blended rate between family and single coverage to come up with an overall dollar amount, because we don't know. If the people will take single or family coverage.
Yeah, I reached out to our organization, other area assistant superintendents to give an idea as well. So, just talking to my colleagues, where they would start this position, like Mary said, we're also looking at our director salaries altogether to make sure it aligns up with what other directors make and with years of experience and so forth. So, it is a band.
And this just, this is the role that kind of brings together the English as a second language across all different courses, right? Because right now, it's happening kind of individually by?
Yes, it's kind of piecemeal right now. This would put one individual with a central focus of supporting our multilingual learners, which I think I shared the data, it's about 60% of the students at East at one time, if not currently, are multilingual learners. About 56% at West, and about maybe eight or nine percent at South.
Okay, so there should be a layer coming out of this. Okay. Look forward to hearing about that as well. Okay, I'm sorry, didn't hear that.
That's okay, no, that's okay. I can speak a little bit to the mental health. No surprise, we've seen an increase in mental health needs, particularly in suicide assessments, threat assessments, and then just overall mental health needs of our student body. But yet, we see a decrease in hospitalizations and community supports. And the reason for that being is there just isn't the available resources, and so schools are more and more needing to help support some of these components of mental health throughout the school day. We did do a little bit of restructuring and looking at this. So, we proposed the 1.0 school psychologist to go to the transition program. We have about high 60s to low 70s as far as number of students there, and this is a very specialized position because we really are looking for somebody that has expertise in helping connect our students to post-secondary supports, and our students with developmental disabilities have been severely impacted by the pandemic. And so, we see a lot more escalated behaviors, mental health challenges. And so, this person would do assessment for special education and all of the service delivery for our students there, and then that will take the lift that right now, it's our staff at Main East that are doing that, and when we looked at the numbers, they actually were doing more because they were supporting our students in transition, and the needs there are great. So, they wouldn't be responsible for doing that, and it would free them up to support the building better for those needs. The .5 social worker is currently a social worker that we have. It was funded through a grant that will be ending, and that is to help support students, again, just across all tiers, tier one, two, and three. We have increased the number of groups that we are running for students, and so that's a big reason why we see some of that increase. And then the last increase in social worker was the social worker increase that we had added mid-year for our students that were newcomers and seeking asylum at Main West. And again, we just see an increased need ongoing, whether it's with this group of students or in general, in the mental health needs. So, it's really just a way to help support and to look at differently how we can support students. Any questions?
Yes, so just, so I get why it may not necessarily be listed here, but for example, the needs at Main West, are you prioritizing like bilingual, multilingual in your, within these searches as well, just to?
Absolutely.
Students, families. Great, perfect, thank you.
And how does the number of social workers compare across all three schools now?
So, it varies a little bit in that, again, the numbers aren't equal. We try to make them equitable, so how the services are delivered in each building are a little bit different. So, at Main West right now, they have an additional psychologist, they have two social workers. The other buildings have three, so, well, East has three, but .5 of that was in the grant, so now they'll have a three full. South has three, and then this addition would make three, whereas West had an additional psychologist before, but that will pair up to, South has an additional psychologist who focuses on 504s because that's the need there, and the other two buildings don't have that advanced need. And then, transition will be an extra psych at East. So, it's really targeting where the student needs are, as opposed to just saying every building has this number of mental health staff.
But I mean, it's equitable for both.
Oh, yeah, we, we analyze the workload as far as special education, minutes, evaluations. We look at the number of students being seen, the number of groups being run, the number of suicide threat assessments that are being completed. So, we look at all of that data in order to kind of come up with a, a general of how we need to serve our students.
Is it, is it easy, the special ed population, I mean, if you're going to have somebody just focus on transition, is that a, is that a really tough position to fill?
I mean, it's, it is a more niche position, and we know right now, school psychologists are difficult to find. We have started interviews and are in our last part of that and have found, you know, some very solid candidates, so.
Oh, good.
But it is a hard position to fill, yes.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
That one's super important. I mean, they're all important, but that's, these kids are?
Yeah, what are you going to do next?
Right, exactly, it's their next steps, yeah.
And I don't know anyone who has tried to navigate some of the social services out there, especially if you are an individual who does not speak English as your primary language. It is extremely difficult, and it's an area that we see that we need to grow.
Any other questions on that? Okay.
And next is the head athletic trainers. They are currently 10-month positions. We are recommending moving them to 12 months and them having a 20-80 work hour calendar because their hours are different than, I would say, any other employee group because they don't work a traditional five days, eight hours a day. They work six hours, six days a week, seven hours, because there's Saturday competitions. So, what we would do is track their hours until they reach 20-80, which is the full-time equivalency of a 12-month position. It is our hope that by tracking it, they will also cover all or most of the summer camps. So, previously, we've contracted out additional hours for summer camp, and there will be a little bit of savings there.
That's really 40 hours a week if they're?
Correct, it's really, it's really 28 hours in a year because one week might be 30 hours, another week might be 50. They are exempt employees, so there's no overtime for those hours.
But they, you have to be, you have to?
Correct.
Actually, because they're working on weekends or?
Yeah.
Any questions, Andrea?
Does that also help with retention, then? I thought that was kind of a tough, were we outsourcing that before, I think?
So, that's the assistant athletic trainers. This is the head. It will make them more competitive when we look at our salary structure for both our head and assistant trainers. We are in the top quartile of this area, which is the top quartile of the highest in the state because right now, there are a number of school districts in the state of Illinois that have no training coverage because they are unable to attract trainers.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions on that? Okay. Number five.
So, this is two FTE for MTSS coordinators. As you saw above, we were talking about the Director of MTSS, that's Kelly Morrissey. It's important for her to have a, a person in each of the, each of our buildings to help coordinate the various different MTSS interventions for our students. We piloted this at West this year, went very well, saw a noticeable?
Yes.
Increase in just awareness, identification, and supportive students. And so, we wanted to move that forward, so we have each of that, one of each of these positions in each of our buildings. And so, right now, if we're okay moving all of this forward, we've been interviewing some excellent candidates, really difficult decisions to make. We like it when that's the case. But it really is meant to help coordinate all of the various needs that our students have in the buildings. The support that goes to those positions.
Any questions on that?
So, Kelly is still the Director of MTSS? And then there'll be three, one in each building?
Yes.
But the only thing that you didn't do was take it from a 10 to a 12-month position?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay, who's going to talk about the slashing of the number six?
Well, six is a need, so, you know, are, we are above the ratio, the cleaning ratio on custodians, but given everything else that was on the table, a decision was made to perhaps push that down further down the road.
Okay.
And then, I'll also take number seven. We currently have an RFP out there. So, Athletico has had some issues with filling their positions, which is why we got the assistant athletic trainer at South. Their RFP came in at $90,000 for three training positions. There is also the option to go to two training positions and have each of the school staff with a head trainer and assistant trainer, and remove the floating trainer that floats between all three schools. And if we did that, the net cost would be $105,000 because Athletico deeply discounts the actual cost of that athletic trainer because they believe they will get referrals into their clinic, so there, they give us a discount.
So, what was the first thing you said about the $90,000?
Yeah, so they, their RFP for Athletico was $90,000 for three positions, which is the equivalent of $30,000 a position. We cannot touch that. So, right now, what is happening is we're getting feedback from the head trainers. We met with the athletic directors last week, so I would expect by this Friday that the head trainers are going to kind of give us which way they want to go and why they want to go that way. So, this is a kind of a, here's the cost, but it's a, we're not 100% sure.
All right, I don't hear any questions on that. Let's go to additional teachers, I agree.
So, additional teaching staff, some of that number is a result of offering a program and supports at Main South, as well as sort of, as, one of the reasons we're getting a director is as we start to look about compliance and what is best practices, we need to make some updates and changes there. So, the increase in two and a half of the, that FTE is in our English language learning program. And then, another two FTE related to social science is part of a bubble that we have. We're shifting U.S. history from the junior year to the sophomore year. And as we do that, as much as we try and balance it, we now have a large number of students all taking U.S. history at the same time, which is atypical. We anticipated that students would take fewer electives in social science as a result of that, but that didn't happen. So, students maintain those electives, and we're happy to take U.S. history. So, former social science guy, it's nice to hear. However, it is going to create this bubble, and we'll revisit this need as that bubble feathers out in two years, if that's still, if that additional staff is still needed.
Okay.
Why is, why has U.S. history kicked back, kicked down?
We're doing it to help, so, we've added as a semester-long class, financial literacy. And so, what we're trying to do, since that's a junior, better serve for the junior year, we have more upper-level electives that are semester that they can pair that with, as opposed to sort of this odd standalone semester-free at the sophomore level. So, that's why we're pushing that U.S. history now, and it's not uncommon. It's probably about a 50-50 split in the, in the area about when students take that either as a sophomore or as a junior.
That's the place where we're putting the ROI for the career pathway, so we want the kids to be a little older as opposed to taking it as a sophomore.
We used to have them take consumer economics, which?
Okay, that makes sense.
You can take it almost any time, but the financial literacy does rely heavily upon what we've been leading kids through in advisory towards career or college advisement, so they're actually using their own data when they're doing that, and so it's just better served at the junior year.
This, that's, it's actually a really big deal. This is going to help us get a lot better.
Okay, any other questions?
You got two questions.
All right, let's move on to teaching assistants.
So, I can just start with teaching assistants. This is extremely preliminary, and at part of that being, you know, typically, we have to get our course recs done first, and then figure out where our teachers are going to be, and then we start to look at student need in order to determine our teaching assistance. And so, some of that is still obviously being developed, so for the first one, we know that this would include a one, the one additional teaching assistant that was added at Main West mid-year, but until we have a little bit more information, which we will bring back to the board once we do have that, that's pretty tentative. And then, in special education, we have a significant increase in this upcoming year of our students entering our life skills program. It just, sometimes these kind of bubbles happen where, for example, at one building, we have 13 students entering life skills, and of those, seven of them have one-to-one aides, and we only have like a 1.6 amount of time that's actually aging out. So, we do know that there will be an increase there. So we do know that there will be an increase there. But again, we haven't done all of our other courses yet to know if there will be a decrease somewhere else that might offset some of that. Obviously, we try to do that, but we just want to, for transparency's sake, give you that information. And then the second part being is we are looking at exploring some restructuring of teaching assistance in our transition program in Frost Academy. And we're just at the very preliminary stages of looking at what that might look like and if that would add additional FTE in order to support our students better. But once we have more specific information, we'll bring that back to you guys.
Do you know when that likely is?
Very soon, the sooner the better. With special ed, I do want to just clarify, like, those needs are always changing. I mean, we can get a student that moves in, we could get three students that move in. So those are ever-changing, but as far as the restructuring, I mean, we're hoping within the next couple of weeks here.
Okay, so if we had 13 students move in and they all needed one-to-one aides, then I'm more responsible for hiring them, right?
Correct. If the IEP outlines that it is necessary, yes.
And if... And is the level the same? I mean, you know, I always thought of the one-to-one medical aides, but it's not that, it's one-to-one aides just helping them through the hallway, right?
I will say, we obviously are trying to prepare students for life after high school and there are no such things as aides after high school. So we really do try to work on fading aid support when it's one-to-one. It also limits the amount of available resources after high school that a student can participate in if they're in a one-to-one situation. But there are students who do to either, you know, is it physically aggressive behavior? It could be medical needs that don't require a nursing assistant, but do require, you know, an aide to help. We have some students that are not ambulatory and unable to utilize a motorized chair and so then they would require an aide. So all the needs are different, it really just depends on the individual student. I will tell you, we don't put a one-to-one on a student just to follow around and hang out. It is usually for very significant needs of support.
So they've been like medically determined or, I mean, something then?
Yeah, we have criteria that we go through. Now, obviously, the students coming in, it's with the sender districts and we do have teams that go and observe and do meet with the senders to help kind of with facilitating that conversation. We obviously have a little bit less control on that to say like, it's not like all of a sudden you come to the high school and all of a sudden you don't need a one-to-one aide if they haven't started fading or that hasn't been appropriate. Again, we've seen the intensity of needs with our students with developmental disabilities increase since the pandemic. That isolation for those years has really impacted their ability to generalize a lot of skills. So it's not surprising to me that we see this increase.
Thanks. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to the security stipend.
So the rationale behind this one is that to give each building a stipend for a lead security person for additional duties, finally, the day-to-day operations, one of the topics we talked about last night was just mentoring and training. This person, as we get new staff, would be responsible for mentoring and training all security staff, the day-to-day operations, and also assisting when possible with residency, I think, to buildings. Having a residency investigator does not take the responsibility from the building to just one person, but I think this will give other buildings an opportunity to have a security person play an active role in that part as well. So the $4,000 stipend for additional duties.
And it's per school?
Per building, so one $4,000 stipend per school.
So is one person doing all this or one at each school?
One at each school.
Okay, gotcha.
Just to be clear, helps with the onboarding experience and training at the building, don't it?
Yes.
Yes. And then also, I think the support for residency cases.
That's needed, yep.
Yep.
That's good. Okay, any other questions on that?
And that person would be involved, like, with training, young...
Yes.
Young security.
Yes, exactly what we talked about.
Okay, all right, good. Great. Okay, item 11, translation stipend.
So this is one that we've talked about, actually, we talked about in cabinet. We kind of wanted to monitor it over a period of time. Brett and I and our team have been in discussion. We do utilize an outside company to do all of our translations. However, there are times when the turnaround needs to be quick and we do have staff, this gives staff an opportunity to utilize our resources within the building. I think our turnaround is going to be a lot quicker. We're going to continue to monitor this. We asked the schools for their feedback as far as the languages needed and we came up with 12 stipends at $500 per stipend. And again, we'll try to monitor how often we utilize and again, I think we're using our staff, our internal resources and I think an alumni can save us some money. And Brett wants to add anything as well because he works quite a bit with translation. I think it's a cost-saving measure as well.
We have service that does this usually because we have a lead time, but sometimes there's a communication that just needs to go maybe that day. And so that's how we would utilize these folks in the building in order to do this, be able to pay them.
So then the 12 was determined by the number of languages?
Yes.
Got it.
Okay, great. And 12, clerical.
Can you say it?
Well, I think we'll do both.
We can tag team.
So the 12, one clerical. Currently, we have an admin assistant that is, that is, shares her time with HR and special education. And as we've looked at some of the needs that we have that aren't currently being fulfilled and/or are being fulfilled by an administrator for some clerical duties, it was, it's proposed that we create a separate admin assistant position that is focused on student services. They would be responsible. I should mention first, this would result in reducing, Frost Academy currently has a 12-month admin assistant. It would be reducing that position to 10 months. And then it would be having this as a 12-month position that would do transportation, extended school year, all of the special education claims for billing. In addition to, we have found that through our Medicaid billing, we are leaving some additional reimbursement on the table that we're not getting back as a district and because we don't have anyone to really oversee the little pieces and follow-up and call the physicians and things like that that we need. So we would like this person to be able to do some of that in order to maximize the reimbursement that the district is getting back. And then the HR part, George can speak to what would happen with the person's current needs.
Katie, and this is a decision over two years. Katie and I talked early on and we just wanted to monitor everything, kind of responsibilities, the timing of the responsibilities, because there's certain things that my administrative assistant does that's a busy time of the year, but it's also a busy factor for special education. So after reviewing after the last, well, for two years, we just felt the efficiency, the service that, and also, and I, Brett, once again, the NWA, which is our Northwest Personnel Association. I look at other districts and see what their staffing looks like to make sure we're comparable, who does what. So I guess my point there is this is something we've talked about for a period of time and Katie and I have been in communication. I do feel like this will provide just a better service. I know some of the things that I do personally, I would say that our more administrative assistant can now go to a person full-time and say with Katie, I think Katie mentioned, I think some of our administrators are doing things that are administrative assistant-related and we do make great administrative assistants act that are more capable. So I think the efficiency as well.
Okay. Anybody have any questions on that? Clearly, you've thought through this.
It's a lot of the time you can allow it.
I'm surprised we didn't get a spreadsheet or something.
Well, there is.
Okay, well, no, I don't mind it. I was sort of joking, but I thought it might be true. Okay, well, thank you, that's all good information. We will be hearing more about this as we move forward. Okay. Let's move on to... Can I have a motion on item 4A, policy 760?
Someone.
Second.
You? Okay. Who's speaking this?
I would feel like...
Okay, Ken.
So just real quickly, this is an existing policy, 760 residency requirements. The intent of this policy is to account for, let's say, for example, a senior is enrolled in the August or September, October of their senior year. Dad takes a job in Tacoma, Washington or wherever. Our current policy allows for that student to continue and finish their senior year. And we believe that people, and the way that it's currently written, a student who becomes a non-resident during the school term may attend school until the completion of the school term in June on tuition-free basis so long, excuse me, so long as there is no break in enrollment after becoming a non-resident. We are inserting, provided the student was a legal resident on the first day of the school term. The reason we're doing that is because we have reason to believe that people have read this to mean that as long as I can get to my senior year, however I get there and then become a non-resident, that I can stay for the entire year. This doesn't fundamentally change what the law allows us to do. In fact, we've enforced this very policy without this language. The purpose, though, of adding this language is to make it explicitly clear to someone getting on our school website, looking at our policy and reading this and misinterpreting this. So it just makes it more explicit what the law actually says. And the key thing there is they will have had to have been a legal resident on the first day of school in order to continue to stay there for the full year.
Thank you.
Thanks, make one minor change to it. Provided the student was a legal resident on the first day of school term and...
And, it says "and," right?
Yep.
So the motion will reflect it being amended in that way. Any questions? Okay. Jenny, would you take the roll? Coyle?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Biker?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Right motion on item 4B, this is policy 7180.
So move.
Second.
Okay.
So 7180 is an existing policy. We were contacted by ISBE. They had two changes. One was a minor date change. This policy is to be reviewed every three years. The date is not a problem when we adopt this, so that's an easy one. But if you look on 7180, and I tell you, it's going to be the first, second, third page, the very top. "Protection and response to bullying, intimidation, and harassment continues." You'll see these lines. "However, this shall not be construed to permit formal disciplinary action solely on the basis of anonymous report." That is what ISBE was very specific, that that language had to be required.
Where is that on that, please?
So...
Right here.
Yeah. Third page, so page one, two, the third page of 7180, it's in the top.
It's under one.
Ah, thank you.
So we've been working with it the last month or so and again, they made that specific change.
Well, they don't want anonymous reports to be the basis for action.
Well, what it really fundamentally means is that we still have a duty to do the investigation and find evidence to support the claim, not just to...
Not just solely.
Yes, not solely.
Like everything you do.
That may be the triggering reason, but we still have a duty, which we would do anyway.
Oh, one other change, put my name in the policy.
I thought that was what you were going to say. I see, you know, we had an old name, prior administrative name on there.
Well, should we even have a name in there? Shouldn't we just have the office?
Well, we are specific with complaint managers and...
Yeah.
But I would say my recommendation would be yes, so that parents can know, go through exactly.
Sensitive topic if it doesn't...
Yeah, I would say. Okay, any other questions on that? All right, Jenny, would you take the roll? Patrice?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Biker?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Okay. Could I have a motion on item... We'll go one at a time here. 5A, please. Someone.
Second.
Okay, Mary?
The district went out for bid for two schools, Main East and Main West, for a liquid applied roofing material. At Main East, the low bidder was rid of her roofing. We asked for an alternate to cap some abandoned roof vents, which just prevents water from getting into your building, which is a good thing. So we are recommending accepting that alternate. At Main West, it's the same liquid applied roofing material. This time, different company, Nickerbacher Roofing, and this is going to go on the nanatorium. If you've seen the nanatorium, it's that thing that looks like white paint that is actually a liquid applied roofing material.
Okay. Any questions on this? Okay, Jenny, would you take the roll? Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Biker?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Right motion on item 5B. So move.
Second.
We are requesting awarding the furniture for the Main West library. As you may recall, Main West library didn't get renovated as part of the renovation. The other two libraries did. So we gave the school an extra $25,000 allocation in capital outlay this year. They then used some of their discretionary capital outlay to bring the purchase to $39,995. We are purchasing it through the Joint Purchasing Cooperative, which is a legal bid that then everybody gets to take onto. It provides volume discounts. So you'll see the percentage discounts off what was priced in the backup material. Cooney is a company that we use frequently. The NCPA Joint Purchasing Cooperative is one that we use frequently as well.
Mary?
They're from Oak Grove Village.
They are from Oak Grove Village.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, Jenny? Collins?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Biker?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Right motion on item 5C?
So move.
Second.
Pool regrowding.
Yeah, so because we didn't want to take the pools offline multiple times, we could not regrow the pool when it was empty at West and actually use it during the year. So we've waited now that all three pools will be back online. We're taking one offline again to regrow. While it is unusual for us to award based on one bid, you can see that this bid is substantially lower than the bid estimate, which we thought it was going to cost about $300,000. The other companies are, quite frankly, too busy to award an extra job this summer, which is why we are recommending the award, even though we only have one bid. Because we know that it's been a good price.
And also, basically, you could only get a one bid, did you say?
Because the other companies that do this work, which are, there are a handful, their summer schedule is already full and they couldn't not take on an additional job this summer.
I think we've worked with them before.
We have not worked with them before, but White has.
Okay. Okay. All right, any other questions? Jenny, would you take the roll? Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Biker?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Could we have a motion on item 5D, science tables at Manes?
So move.
Second.
We went out to bid on three classrooms of science tables for Manes as part of the furniture construction. The low bidder, Learning Envirements, produced an alternate table that we then requested a sample of. The school went through the sample, compared it to the specified table that they already have and found that the alternate was acceptable. So we are recommending the award of the science tables for the alternate Learning Envirements in the amount of $37,386.32.
Any questions or comments? Jenny? Lee?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Biker?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Could I have a motion on item 5E, concrete and paving at all three schools? So move.
Second.
So as we are starting to finish up construction and we're starting to fix those sidewalks that we've kind of pushed off for years because we knew that heavy trucks and equipment would be trapping all over them and deteriorating them even further. So this is a bid for various, both asphalt and concrete work at all three schools. Shorter asphalt services was the low bidder, and the amount of $613,000. This is a single bid that covers all three schools.
Okay, any questions or comments? All right, Janique? Lee?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Biker?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Have a motion on item 5F, copy paper?
So move.
Second.
With the volatility of the paper market for the last several years, we've, and actually, last year, no one would guarantee a copy paper price. So we've gone to one-year bids. We had three bidders. The apparent low bidder would not guarantee their price through, after July 1st, 2023, which is the entire bid period for paper. So we chose not to award to them since they, we have no idea what their price is, which then put Garvey Paper Products as the low bidder. Garvey has bid on our products in the past, supplied some of the paper last year. It was anybody who could get you paper was who supplied your paper. We're familiar with them, and we've got samples of the paper that they bid for copy machines, and it's what we're currently using, so.
They're local as well.
They are local as well.
Okay.
For contract paper group, it's not cheaper than Garvey's.
But they will not guarantee their price.
They're not.
So, and they put in their bid that they can increase their prices at any time, which then means we have no idea what their price would be. I'm not sure why they bid.
All right, any other questions? Collins, okay, take your role. Patrice?
Aye.
Biker?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Have a motion on item 6, capital outlay? So move. Second.
And I want to point out that you have two summaries by school. I gave you, if you recall, last year when we did capital outlay, and we are doing a similar thing this year, we awarded $50,000. Now, as part upfront, and then gave them an allocation of $50,000 to spend on items that they needed throughout the year. So the 22, 23 amounts are how they spent that $50,000 discretionary amount at all three schools. So you can see what they're doing. And then you have their capital outlay for 23, 24. So you can see that Main West went over their $50,000. They will have less amount to carry forward on their discretionary amount. At Main South, Main South is pledging all of their capital outlay to a bid that you will see next month on music equipment storage. So we are bidding storage units for that. And then Main East went for a variety of items as well. The schools do this every year. They solicit input from their departments on what they need. You'll see that as part of their discretionary spending, it's all over the board. It's branding and signage that they need as their weight finding during spaces. It's replacement of mat and athletic equipment. That is beyond their useful life. It's some office furniture because we did not specifically, we didn't replace any office furniture for any administrative position throughout the district. This part of construction, so there are some deaths that are beyond their useful life. The one item that I will tell you we don't have here, because Katie and I are looking through it, we're going to see if there's possibility to take some of the items out of grant funds, is some capital outlay for transition. We did not think it was fair that the transition allocation would come out of Main East since it is a district-wide program. So we want to take a look at, is there an opportunity to buy some of that equipment in the grant this year and next year? So we will bring you a small amount. I mean, it's $12,000 now. By the time we whittle it down and see, I would imagine it would be undertended. Are there questions?
Questions on that? Okay.
So I just want to make sure I'm not misreading this. At Main South, primarily on one thing?
One thing.
Okay.
They know that they wanted to, music, and you can see West used a chunk of their money too on that one thing, but instrument and uniform storage is expensive. It is casework. It is a specific size based on the instrument, as you're probably well aware. So they actually, it's beyond the big threshold. So we are bidding that storage equipment at Main South currently.
Who's the decision-maker, it's the principal?
Principal, along with the department, shares. It kind of bubbles up. I would say that probably for the last, what, five years, we've always seen fine arts want the storage equipment. And I think that they're finally, after all this time, starting to rise to the level of being a priority.
Okay. Anything else on that? All right, Jenny, would you take the role? Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Biker?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Then motion on item 7, team doctor agreement for Main South.
So move.
So if you recall, Main East and Main West has a contract for team doctor, with advocate. Main South has a contract with a company that is now under the umbrella of Illinois Foreign and Joint. So this is a very similar contract to what we have already in place. And I know that I've at least done two finer contracts since I've been here. So it's been in existence for over a decade, probably longer. This contract has a zero cost to the district, but provides physician services at the football games and then as needed basis. It's kind of the doctor that they go to if they have a student with a concussion and need a medical opinion and clearance to play.
I just want to make sure this has been reviewed by our attorneys.
Has been reviewed by the attorney as well as our risk manager.
Any questions on that? Okay, there are enough. Please take the role. Collins?
Aye.
Biker?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
I have a motion to go into closed session for purpose of student personnel, appointment, employment compensation, performance discipline, or dismissal of specific employees.
Before we go into that closed session, I just want to make one short remark regarding all this hard work on bids and awarding of contracts. Thank you for all the hard work. And as we can see, we've been seeing a transparency with all the competitive bids and work as much as we could. But for example, that sees Chicago National Management, as you mentioned, we only find one vendor participating, others not. And reason for that is per se, you're saying that because the timely manner may be a short time. For the taxpayers and for our transparency, especially when the amount is 200-something thousand dollars, this is a high amount, I think we should be more seriously, cautiously, really work into it and try to get a transparency of getting a two to three listed bids for the understanding of the taxpayer community as well. I know you're really trying, but if we can work it earlier, in timely manner, we might be able to get some, you know, potential competitive bids